Oh, yeah.
They want to wait till the end of the meeting?
Whatever.
I've been busy.
I know you have.
It's alright.
Alright, it's time to start. We'd like to welcome everybody here, those who are in our chambers and those who are watching on TV. We appreciate you taking the time and the effort to watch this. We'd like to start, we've got Stacy Beck that's going to give us our opening prayer, motivational speech.
No motivational speech tonight.
Well, just being here is motivational enough.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we come before thee this evening in great thanks for this beautiful city that we live in and are able to participate and learn and serve and grow. We pray that thy Spirit will be with us tonight, that as the City Council meets, that they will have and feel thy inspired hand upon them, and that they will reach out and do the things that thou would have them do as they're serving us. And we are thankful for their time and dedication, and we're thankful for the many people that serve and run our city, and we're thankful for the residents and bless them, that we can all continue to serve and grow when we say this in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Stacy. I've asked Councilman Gordon to lead us in the pledge legion.
Would the audience please rise? Please repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. We'll now open it up for public comment. Anybody that'd like to come up and address the mayor and council, you're sure welcome to come up. Seeing none, we'll go out of public hearing, and we'll go into council comments. Councilman Mendenhall.
Really quick before inviting the Director of the Chamber of Commerce to come up and kind of give us a quick chamber minute, met with the youth city council Thursday afternoon at four o'clock, and had their first meeting of the summer, basically, since being out of school. Really impressed. I've said this before about the youth city council, but I can tell you, those parents that have had their kids be part of the youth city council, you're doing great. Those kids are awesome kids, from Maple Mountain High School, from ALA, and from Spanish Fork High School. They were in here dressed in church clothes, professional attire. They have grown in numbers. They're up to probably this year about fifty youth that are going to participate in youth city council. I tell you, it's a credit to Richard, Councilman Richard Davis and Brandon Gordon for taking that role on before me, but these kids, as an organization, have grown, involved in many different service projects. You'll see them with shirts on during Fiesta Days coming up next month, that they help us out with a lot, that help with a lot of their volunteer opportunities. So, we had that meeting, and those kids are excited. I was impressed that there was about thirty-five of them out here in their professional attire while school's not in session. The city is in good hands with kids like that, that are willing to come out and volunteer. So, we had that meeting, it went well, and got scheduling in there of what they can help the city out with when they come in here. Other than that, I'll turn the time over to President Stacy Beck and Director Clark Karas to give us the chamber update.
We have some exciting news to announce today. The first one is that the Play Unplugged program has been awarded the $25,000 grant.
Alright.
That so many people so tirelessly worked for. So, we were just notified yesterday through State Farm that we will be awarded that for the Play Unplugged program, and we've met with the committee and can see that running for a couple more years. And Clark has some good statistics and details on that.
We received the word from State Farm yesterday, and part of it was how absolutely blown away they were at the Spanish Fork Salem reaction. There were, out of 198,000 people who were going on and voting on Facebook, 99,000 of them from throughout the United States, at one time or another were casting votes during those days for Spanish Fork Salem Chamber of Commerce. And they could not believe that a community with a population of this size was that absolutely dedicated to doing this. And therefore, it's been picked up by Fox News and went national tonight. The only community that is smaller than us is one in Ohio that's 5,400 people, and so we do outnumber them a little bit, but literally, at one time or another, there were 99,000 people from throughout the United States voting for Spanish Fork during this. And that is a tribute to Spanish Fork. I can imagine that a lot of those people who were voting were, you know, expatriates. We reached out to everybody, Congressman Jason Chaffetz, who schooled Congress in social media, actually tweeted twice. He even tweeted on a Sunday for us, which in other states was, you could tell when he'd tweet, and it would go up. So, the social media works. So, we're excited.
And I think we just need to give a big thank you to Colt Sampson with State Farm Insurance. He is a workhorse.
He's a rock star.
Wow, yeah.
He put this, literally, he put it together in two weeks. There were some communities that spent like an entire year writing this grant application, and Colt, not only did he guerrilla market like a true gorilla, as big as he is, but he put this grant together in two weeks. So, he will now become the grant writer for the championship.
There you go. Awesome.
One other quick thing, we do have the Chamber of Commerce and Rotary Scholarship banquet next Tuesday night, June 23rd, at the Shaloon Reception Center. Dinner will be at seven. I think all your invites are in your boxes, or hopefully you guys got that. There will be twenty-six scholarships, each $1,500 awarded to our local seniors that just graduated. So, we're excited to be able to give back in that way with the Rotary.
Great. Thank you.
Pretty awesome.
Thanks.
I felt to note that Councilman Dart is out of town tonight. He's in Nebraska following his grandson, playing in a baseball tournament. So, kudos to him. I'm sure he would rather be here than there. Alright, Councilman Scobes.
Mayor, just two small things to report on the airport. One, the runway closures are posted, the dates and stuff are posted on the airport's website, the Woodhouse website for that. And then, following our meeting, our airport board meeting, what was it, I guess, two weeks ago now, Chris Child had a meeting with airport patrons, with aviators and those with hangars and stuff. I talked about the new leases that'll be coming out. And really, it was like a town hall meeting, gave them a chance to kind of voice their concerns as far as rates, as far as improvements. Some of the concerns had to do with proposed changes to the hangars as far as improving them, so that it's not just the corrugated metal. Good discussion. They took notes, and he's got that, that he'll bring back to the board. I just happened to stay after, just quietly in the back to kind of hear the discussion. Everything from the discussion we brought to the board where it'll be discussed, and then, as I have those recommendations and stuff, I'll bring that back to the council. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Councilman Gordon.
Mayor, a couple weeks ago, we crowned a few new queens in our community. We crowned a mini, a little, and a junior and a teen, Miss Spanish Fork and their attendants. So, we got four new queens, and it's not just that evening, as you know, that they get the crown, they help out around town and do different community service things. So, I was excited to be part of that. And Stacy Argyle helps put on a good pageant for those little girls, and runs that through our rec department. So, that's a really good opportunity. I also wanted to mention, we're welcoming a new officer into the fold. I'm excited to meet Rex. We got another dog, and I'm sure we'll meet him soon. So, I'm really excited about that. And that's made possible because of generous citizens that live in our community. And so, I'm really excited about that. And that's all I have.
Great. Councilman Davis.
Last night, we had pictures taken for our Fiesta Days, for our magazine. Next city council, we will open up Fiesta Days for 2015. So, remember to get our cowboy hats and be ready. But, this will be my last year representing the city council for Fiesta Days. And last night, to see all those wonderful volunteers that truly help for Fiesta Days was unreal. It was a wonderful sight, and them ugly green shirts that we're wearing this year, but at least you will know who we are. Now, I know Karen Bradford's going to yell at me for saying that. That's her favorite color, so. But, we will look great in them. And they looked, and they looked great in them last night, all those volunteers. And I'm just so proud of them, and thrilled to see so many wonderful people in our community that volunteer for such a great organization as Fiesta Days, to make people happy. And it's been a great opportunity to be part of that, to see, no, eight years ago, to start our chairpeople and vice chair and post chair like we started eight years ago, and to see Fiesta Days get stronger and stronger every year because these new chairmen bring in something new to Fiesta Days, something more exciting, something a little better. And it just got better, and it's got better, and it's got better. And it's just been fun to be part of that. And I just want to thank every one of those volunteers that helped with Fiesta Days and be part of that. And it's just been an honor to be part of that myself. So, thank you. And Mayor, I guess that's all I got.
Well, there you go. Thank you. Alright, I had the opportunity to go last week to an APPA convention, that's the American Public Power Association, which we are a part of. And it was really good to go back and see the concerns of everyone in the nation over our power, and the things that they're doing to try to make public power better for everyone, and try to keep the costs low, and new ways that we can deal with certain regulations that are being handed down to us present quite a challenge, especially for us here in this area where we rely on coal a lot, and which is a real efficient, cheap form of electricity. And with these new regulations, we're having to look elsewhere for different resources and that. So, it was a good conference, and I'm glad I went. Now, I'm going to invite Del Robinson up to talk a little bit about our trails promotion that we've been doing. If some of you have been watching, you'll see it.
I said, "Time for them."
I just leaned over to you as soon as I, after council comments.
They are. They're awesome.
Go, sorry.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate this opportunity. We, as you know, and hopefully the citizens know, our River Trail has been completed. And we have had an event called the Treasures of the Trail the last five weeks, leading up to a big celebration, which we have moved to June 27th. So, on the 27th, at the sports park, we're going to be having a big ribbon cutting and celebration. And we encourage the residents to come out and walk, or bike, or whatever, however they want to transport the trail, something other than motorized, of course. We'll have a lot of, we'll have different stations along the trail where they can get stamps and show up at the sports park and earn fabulous prizes for those stamps. If you want to collect all ten, the full length of the trail, that'll be going from nine to eleven. And then, at eleven o'clock, we'll redeem prizes and have some various activities and things going on down at the sports park. So, we encourage you to do that, and to join with us in this celebration. This trail's been many, many, many years in the making. And so, we're excited for it. I know a lot of the residents are out using it right now, and so, we want them to come and join in this celebration with us. Now, part of my responsibilities the last few weeks has been to be the agent for the mayor's acting career. And that has been an interesting experience for me.
And me.
And you. But, I, we want to show a couple of video clips here.
Oh, really?
I really appreciate a lot. Pete Hanson is awesome. He's on John's crew at SFCN, and he's got a wonderful imagination and very creative. And so, I would like to show a couple of these video clips if we could, so the public can see them. Many of you may have seen them on TV already. Let's do the splash pad, and then the golf course, and then show the newest one, please. You're probably wondering what that has to do with the trail. All of these pieces that were made are called Treasures of the Trail. All of these recreational properties are attached to the trail in some way. And so, these are properties that we're featuring leading up to the ribbon cutting of the trail. So, the next one is the golf course.
Week four of the Treasures of the Trail takes us to the Spanish Oaks Golf Course. Prepare for your walk on the River Trail by coming to the golf course and take a ride in the fresh canyon breeze. Bring the family for some fun. If you use the secret code, "A hole in one," you will get a free small bucket of balls for the driving ring. And take a selfie with our banner and share it on hashtag SF City Trails to be in big contests. Come enjoy eighteen holes. Oh, jeez. Don't say anything. Let me do the talking.
Do you know why I pulled you over, sir?
Do you know who I am?
I wouldn't even care if you were the mayor.
But I am the mayor.
I know the mayor, and you are not the mayor.
But, but, but...
Don't worry about it, sir. Just the facts. Number one, you picked up your ball and put it on the green. That's a penalty.
Well, well, well...
Number two, you were out of play in a restricted area, the natural habitat of the yellow-billed cuckoo.
Oh, is that what that was?
And lastly, and most seriously...
I need some backup.
You never replaced your divot.
Hold on. Wow, I think we made it. You didn't see Chief Adams, did you? Good, there for a minute, I thought we were in trouble.
This week, the police department responded to a disturbance at Spanish Oaks Golf Course. Two men, the first claiming to be the mayor, were taken into custody after they drew their golf clubs on the officers. The second man refused to answer any questions.
The public had no idea we had such a talented mayor and council, and city manager.
Hey, our city manager...
Okay, we have one more new...
When that ball went into the hole, the guys were rolling it, trying to go in the hole. Dave took a golf club and said, "Here." Hits it, puts it right in, so. It was awesome.
Get ready, get ready.
When is the trail opening?
June 27th.
Nine AM sharp.
Somebody wake me up.
What about the party?
A party? No one said anything about a party.
I want to go.
Will there be food?
Oh, yeah, lots of food, and prizes and fun.
I need a new T-shirt.
What time?
11 AM, after the trail walk.
Where?
At the sports park, of course. Duh.
Now, I'm really excited.
Anyway, we'll hope everybody will come and join us on the 27th for this party. Can I yield just a moment to SFCN, since they were featured here?
Yes.
A couple of items. First off, Mayor, we owe you a big thank you.
Oh, yeah?
For everything you've done for Spanish Fork 17 and SSBN. You are an amazing actor. I don't know how you haven't got a lead role in a major motion picture.
Thank you.
We do appreciate it, and I think it's done a great service for the Treasures of the Trail. I did want to bring this up real quick. This is the, some of the press we got. These were comments made about our broadcast of the baseball. I hope you all got a chance to catch some of the baseball.
Yes.
And it was a great success, both for the city, of course, with both teams going to the finals, but also with the production that we were able to do for baseball. So, if you hadn't seen these, I wanted to give you a chance to read them. And I wanted to read them for everybody out there. These were comments made about our broadcasts during the state finals. This one is from somebody named Utah Bruin in Saratoga Springs, and that's not me, because I don't live in Saratoga Springs. Says, "Unreal, the feed seems to be a KSL feed today, a major broadcaster, and it is terrible." Well, I don't know about terrible. "The previous broadcast was done by Spanish Fork Cable, and it never froze up once. Is this really it? Spanish Fork Cable can put together an internet broadcast better than KSL? Wow." The other one came a little later, as you can see, it's actually two days later. "This Spanish Fork broadcast is head and shoulders above the broadcast that we have been getting for the 5A games today," because we were obviously only doing the 4A games. "If it were possible, I would like to send these two men and their crew some money to pay for their efforts if they would broadcast the 5A games tonight as well." It was awesome, and we did a great job. I wanted to just say, you know, Pete is obviously very talented, but he also does the coordination of all of this, and does a great job for us, and a great job for the city of Spanish Fork. The announcers that they're talking about was Ryan Pickens, who does the main announcing, and Kyle, of course, Kyle Breathwaite, who also does the announcing. And the producer, who was running the show, was Andy Guestlessen, who has just been tremendous for Spanish Fork 17. And of course, all the cameramen, and won't go into all of the names, but they did a great job. You can watch some of these games at youtube.com/spanishfork17. You can't see the finals and the semifinals, because the rights of those were actually owned by Deseret Digital, and so, we didn't own the rights. So, we can't actually put those on our YouTube channel. But, you can go to video.sfcn.org, and you can download those if you wanted to have your own copy of those games. So, I just wanted to do a shout out to those guys, and what a great job they do, and thank them for their hard efforts. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Make sure you tell everyone thanks. Appreciate that. Okay, as you know, we have an election coming up this year, and we have three spots on the city council that are going to be up in November. And we had four candidates apply for those positions. We have them here today, and I'd like all four of them to come up, and I'd like to introduce them, so everyone knows who they are. Yeah, you can go down there. So, yeah. So, what I'd like to do is each one of them, say your name, rank, serial number. Just tell them who you are, just your name, so everybody knows the face with the name.
I am Stacy Beck.
Chad Argal.
Brad Gonzalez.
Brandon Gordon.
Great. We appreciate these guys running. It's not always the funnest thing to do. Put yourself out there, but we appreciate all those who do. Wish there'd been more, but congratulations to three of you, because there's one man out. Sorry, but that's how it's going to be. So, elections will be in November, but we had to file earlier because of state law. So, all those candidates had to file now. And so, best wishes to you, and run a nice, clean campaign, and have fun out there campaigning. Thank you. Okay, Spanish Fork 101, Water Power System Savings, Chris Thompson and his crew.
Yeah, I have here our water division manager, John Waters, and then our foreman over drinking water, Paul Taylor, and our foreman over pressurized irrigation, Brian Grace here. And soon after, these good employees took over our water department, we sat down and we looked at a lot of the issues that our water system had. There was a lot of what I would term unnecessary pumping issues going on, and some source problems that we had, and some water waste. And we spent a lot of time together in a conference room, just trying to work out issues. If you could bring up the slides that go with 101. Anyway, we sat down, and we tried to focus on how we could solve these problems. And in 2011, we brought to you a diagram of how our water system worked. And if Dave can bring that up from the 101. It's a PDF on the 101. At any rate, what this diagram did is it showed where our water sources were, and it showed how they fed into the city. And so, what we have is our water sources, where they are in elevation. You can see the elevation, and then it showed the different parts of the city, and what elevation there were, and how we could gravity feed from these sources down into the different parts of the city. And if we could make it so that our gravity sources could feed as much of the city as possible, and develop them, make some improvements on how our system runs, then we could save a lot of money in power cost. If you could slide up to the next. And then, we're able to come up with a pressure zone map of where we wanted the city to eventually be at, so that our highest up sources could feed the highest up parts of the city and minimize pumping. And the goal is to get as little pumping cost as possible. And this last year, we were able to do an analysis of what, how much electricity was used in 2013 versus how much electricity was used in 2014, and it was one and a half million kilowatt hours less, which is a savings of $115,000 worth of power. And largely, that should be attributed to these employees who took the ideas, they helped formulate them, but then they actually made them work. They tweaked the They tweaked the system, they built a lot of the system themselves. A lot of the, I would say, the more intricate parts of the systems, the drains and connections. And they really work hard. They really own this water system, and it's very important to them that there's redundancy in the system. They cut the water losses from over 40% down to 26%, and they've done just so many incredible things. And if you'll notice, since they've taken over, we haven't had the water pressures dip down so low, and having to restrict water as much to our parks and schools, and those type of issues have gone away these last few years, which have been drought years. And what a great blessing these guys are to us.
Great. Hey, thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Really, we appreciate that. You know, it's employees like you that make this city great. And just an example of the kind of people we have here working for Spanish Fork City, so we appreciate, yeah, very much. Do you have the next item, too?
Okay, the first item on the consent agenda is the Utah Local Government Contract for 2550 East. We are constructing, reconstructing the bridge, or no, at 2550 East and Canyon Road, we are reconstructing the intersection there to put a signal there. And this is the local government contract to allow us to do the engineering on that, so. The next item is an impact fee reimbursement agreement with Precor Building, that's at the end of Chapel Drive. In order to build that additional building, they installed some 600 amp power along the road, and this is an agreement to reimburse them for the impact fee portion of that line. A 600 amp line's a lot bigger than they need just for that building. It serves a lot of future development, and so this allows them to be reimbursed for that. The next item is the airport project closeout documents. This is for land that we had to purchase around the airport in order to extend the runway, in order to close out those land purchases, then we need to give some guarantees to the FAA that that land is in hand, and that we've gone through the steps to acquire that. And then finally, in the consent items agenda, there's the UDOT Center Street-US6 Cut Bridge Agreement. This is some of the other agreement that we have on the agenda for the 2550 East project. But on this agreement, when we connected the trail along the river, it was a $1.8 million project, we were actually able to do that under budget, and we took $150,000 that were not spent on that project, and we were able to get MAG and UDOT to agree to let us use it on this bridge project, and the widening of that intersection with Center Street and US6. This project is now fully permitted. All of the land that we need is acquired, and that whole painful process has gone through, and so we should be able to get bids and start construction on that very soon. And we're excited about that project, so.
Chris, how long did that take?
It took over a year, my goodness. I don't know the process that they go through. It's done.
There you go.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, you got a few gray hairs over that one. All right, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent item.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Amending the fiscal year 2015, city budget revision number three, in all his glory.
So tonight, we're going to live in two different budget worlds. We'll be in 15, which is the year we're in now. We'll have a public hearing on amending it for the last part of 15, and then we're also going to approve this amendment, if you approve it, and then we're going to do 16 in a few minutes later. So trying to separate those two documents in two different fiscal years. So I'm going to hand out to you. Okay, so this is budget year 15. It ends the end of June, and this is our third revision on this budget. So here's our beautiful city, and it's a 60 to 70 million dollar corporation that our city provides services for. If you can see this picture, it's an old picture. How can you tell? That's right. But it still looks beautiful, and it's just a beautiful city to live. So the budget revision you have, we're actually going to decrease the budget, so there's not too much excitement on raising the budget. We're decreasing the budget mainly because of some projects didn't get done, or didn't, that were budgeted for, and they're going to move forward to the next year. And so when we get into 16, you'll see that that budget, 16, is increased just a little bit in order to get those projects moved forward. So the proposed budget on the revision is 66 million, not 67 million. Just show you the differences, the changes in the general fund, enterprise fund, and the miscellaneous funds. If you look at this column over here, this is the revision numbers, and this is the differences that took place. So the general fund only changed 300,000. The enterprise funds, which were a lot of big projects, decreased 2 million. And the miscellaneous funds increased 300,000 from the last time we had a revision. So, I want to highlight a couple of main items. This is the general fund, which mostly is funded by taxes. There are some changes in engineering. I just highlighted a couple of these bigger ones, and let you know, if you want to discuss any of those, engineering was, most of that is an adjustment in the wages and benefits. Streets is also wages and benefits. The Justice Center one is a security system that we're sharing with the court, the state court, and the golf course. There's so many more people golfing up there, they needed more merchandise to sell, so they needed to buy more merchandise. So that's the general fund change, up 300,000. In the enterprise, in the, sorry, in the revenue for the general fund, so this slide here was all the expenses, where money is spent. You can see it runs from senior center to police department, fire department, streets, parks, cemetery, library, arts, council, swimming pool, golf. Those are all things inside the general fund. So our general fund is almost $20 million to run the general fund. Where do we get that $20 million? You can see our sales taxes continuing to grow over the last couple of years. I highlighted these arrow ones, the one I want to talk about. So, sales taxes up 175,000 from the last budget, and building permits are up 165,000. And so, in essence, what we're, when you get down to the end here, we were budgeting to use almost 800,000 in reserves, because those revenues were coming in higher. We dropped how much we're using out of reserves, to only using 300,000 instead of 800,000. So that's a good thing. The economy's growing. Here is the enterprise fund. So in the piece of pie, we have the general fund, and then we have the enterprise fund, which is all the utilities, and you can see that some of those large purchases are going to be either moved forward, or the projects were changed. In the end, the net is $2 million less for 15, and you'll see a lot of those projects are now in 16. One of the items that needs to be discussed in our public hearing will be about donations and fee waivers, and it's been requested, the last time we had a new one was the Templar Motorcycle Veterans was here, as far as continuing that one on. And the other one is a cultural celebration here. It'll be probably discussed amongst yourselves to decide whether you want to add that one. And maybe Dell or Dave can explain a little bit more about that, if you have some questions about that. So, in the end, this is the summary. The budget's actually going down. You'll approve and amending the budget to decrease the budget. And that's the presentation for the budget for 15 that you have right now.
Okay.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Davis, a second by Councilman Gordon to go into public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now in public hearing. Anyone that would like to come up and talk about the budget with the mayor and the city council, you're welcome to come on up. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scopes, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any comments, discussions? Do you want Kent to go over line by line of the budget? I don't think so.
I would, if you wanted.
I know you would, and I don't want you to, so. Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
Well, need to discuss.
Oh, do you, oh, that's right. The cultural event. Does everybody have any comments on that discussion? Is everybody okay with adding that?
I know a group of the people that are excited about it, that are already planning for it. A lot of my neighbors that are Latinos, and so I know that they've already put it on their radar, and they're very excited about it. Provo's had some success with theirs. Draws some good people out, and to our community that also spend money, so. I'm excited for it.
Great. Anybody else?
We discussed a little bit, focused, and it's the people that are organizing it, I guess, as well, have a focus of this cultural celebration that involves all cultures too, right? Bringing cultures together and melting them, rather than just saying, "This is a culture, and we're celebrating, stay away." It's like, come be a part of this festival, so I think it's a, I think it's a good cause as well.
Okay, so we have to make a motion to add that to the, or is it included?
It's in there right now.
Okay, so it's in there, okay, now. Pull it out. All right, it sounds like we want it in there. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 2015 city budget revision three, or the whole budget.
Revision three. So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, ordinance 11-15, amending provisions of the municipal, dealing with accessory apartments and parking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've presented these changes to the planning commission. They've made a recommendation a little over a month ago to approve the changes that I'll talk about tonight. That was after we talked with them on a couple of occasions about the proposal. And in short, we're really just simply looking to clarify some things with these proposed amendments. We'd like to clarify what an accessory apartment is. We'd like to clarify what, of all things, a garage is for purposes of meeting a minimum garage requirement that we have. And then we'd like to clarify exactly how much parking is required for certain types of developments. So, those are the changes that are outlined in the proposal that's before you tonight, and the ordinance that the city attorneys prepared. Like a lot of things that I end up talking to you about, it's pretty dry stuff, so we'll just leave it at that, unless you have questions, or want me to go through it in any more detail. Again, we're not looking to change rules as much as we are simply to clarify what the existing rules mean.
All right. This is a public hearing on this? So I need a motion to go in.
Motion to go into public hearing.
I got a motion by Councilman Davis, a second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody that would like to come and address the council and the mayor on this issue, you're sure welcome. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scopes, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any comment or discussion on this ordinance? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 11-15, amending provisions of the municipal code, dealing with accessory apartments and parking.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scob. Since this is an ordinance, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall?
Aye.
Councilman Scob?
Aye.
That passes. All right, new business. Approval of amended fiscal year 2015 city budget revision number three? We did that. How come I've got it listed twice here?
I know it was a public hearing, one was adopted.
All right.
We jumped the gun.
We jumped the gun. All right. How about approval of the 2016 city budget? Do you feel better now?
I feel better.
All right.
To help you.
As long as you're happy.
To help you to sort these out, I put this one on green.
Green like my shirt.
What'd you say?
Karen would love these.
String for new, it's the new budget. I'm going to go quick through this one.
Promise?
Promise. This is the night of the adoption. So, first, I went down to Utah Lake, and I took this picture. Our mayor has become so famous on YouTube that the natives around Utah Lake have sculpted his head in there. Down at Utah Lake. I thought it was pretty impressive work they've done.
Yeah, very.
You'll autograph that.
It's made by 10 glasses out.
Okay, I'm going to quickly go through this. In May, this whole process started on May 5th. The council got a tentative budget. The public got to look at it. On June 2nd, Dave presented the budget, and we had a public hearing that night. And tonight is the 16th, and it's the adoption for next year's budget. Next year's budget is $66 million also. You can see that our general fund has now tipped over the $20 million. Enterprise fund's 42, and our miscellaneous fund's at 3. So a total budget is 66 million. Here's a nice pie chart. You saw this in the public hearing. Shows our total budget proportionally by general fund and by enterprise fund. In the general fund, this is some changes, and I'll highlight, this is changes from revision 2's budget. So this difference column is from revision 2 to 16. But there has been a couple of changes since the last time that you'd seen the budget. I'm going to highlight a couple of those changes and talk about those. And so as we get near the end of the year, Chris Thompson and Recreation, and all the department heads have to figure out what projects are really going to get done before the end of the year, and which ones we need to redo to carry forward to July, as we start, we continue the construction season into the summer. But our budget years are in two halves of the summer. So, what's happening in this budget right here is the parks one. The public is probably, if you've driven around Sierra Bonita Elementary School, there's a lot of earth dirt being moved around. It's looking great. I think what's going to end up being there is going to be a great park. But that, the expenses have rolled forward through into July. Chris, I'm not sure, you know when the date's going to be done on that? Put you on the spot. Before October? Okay, this year. Anyway, so that's, that's one of the numbers that changed. About $400,000 was taken out of 15 and put into 16. So I want to highlight some of the changes that hasn't been discussed in a meeting yet, so. And the streets, there's a couple of projects there, and those main differences, most of that amounts is stuff you've already seen, but the main one is some. that amounts is stuff you've already seen, but the main one is some parks on the construction there. So, enterprise wise, some of those projects has been rolled forward, so they increased the, to 42 million on there, there's the, and in the B and C ones, there's some B and C roads that are changed on those, capital projects changed a little bit, not big numbers. So, I'm gonna buzz through these, these are some numbers you've already seen. And, those are the general fund services the city provides, and you can see, of course, the police department doesn't make a lot of money, but they cost a lot of money, and that's what it costs to have a police department. Look at our fire department, that's a volunteer fire department, if the city had a full-time fire department, it would be a lot like the police department, and there's not much revenue in the fire department, so we are blessed as a city to have a volunteer fire and ambulance department. So here's the rest of the general fund, it shows that the, the net for the general fund is about $11 million that doesn't support itself, and that's where the need that we have taxes and contributions from the enterprise funds that come back to the general fund. I showed some of the same information about the general fund when we talked about 15, so I'm just gonna skip past this one, here's the dividend that we talked about as far as the donation, as a dividend from the enterprise funds back to the general fund to keep, help keep our property taxes and low, to help cover that $11 million that were needed in the general fund in order to provide those services. We talked about these utility rates, and you approve, tonight, these rates will be adopted, the sewer will increase, but most of the others will not. And there was a change on the donation list, we've added the one that you added tonight, we put that into fifteen, 16s, so, and you adopt it, then if, if that celebration goes forward next year, that it will be budgeted as far as the fee waiver on it. And we did correct the fingerprint that out of town, non-resident, it's $15, but if you do commit a crime, it's free. I did catch that when I was watching the last meeting.
At the ballgame.
And here's the list, the same list that was before, having an opportunity if you wanted to change any of those, but we added the, the highlighted one that's there. We talked about those, and included in the budget is the Springville Airport, which is half the city, half our city and half of Springville, so as you adopt the budget tonight, you're adopting that airport board, and we'll talk about the RDA budget in a few minutes when we get to the RDA. So, here is the total budget that you'll be approving, would be the $66 million.
Any comments, questions about the budget?
The only comment I have is, I've had questions from different citizens, in fact, Sunday had a discussion with, with some about budget and city finance how it works, one thing for those that aren't aware, just to, just to note, the city budget, as noticed with the 2015, it was revision three, it's a living document, it's things that the, the city looks at with expenditures, and they make sure that, that every, you know, all accounts are paid and things are taken care of so that the budget balances, if they don't, if the departments don't need monies that, for different projects, that's returned back to general fund, and vice versa to make sure the city stays running, and so it's, it's just important to recognize that, that the budget that's passed, isn't the budget that we end up with, there's always revisions, and all in the nature of making sure that there's a balanced budget, so I appreciate your work and well done.
Okay. How to entertain a motion?
I move that we approve fiscal year 2016 city budget.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scopes, a second by Councilman Mendenhall, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Alright, moving on, proposed preliminary plat for Eagle Nest Estates.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This proposal involves a property that's a little bit unique, it's almost kind of an infill type of a project located just a little bit east of the junior high, so if you don't mind, maybe go into the aerial photo we have on the next, or one of the next pages. And the proposal's fairly, I think, simple to, to get our heads around, there's a portion of a street that was constructed with previous development here, just north of, of 700 North, about 850 or so east, and the concept simply is to extend that street all the way to the north to 600 South, the subject properties all zoned R1-9, and as proposed, these different lots that would be developed, all meter minimum, lot size and width and depth requirements for that R1-9 zone, so, what's proposed here with this preliminary plat is a standard subdivision, everything meets all of the city's criteria, it's a little bit unique again in that it's kinda infilling a portion of a block that simply hasn't been previously developed, but both the development review committee and planning commission have reviewed this proposal and have recommended that it be approved.
Any questions, discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I entertain a motion to, or I move we propose, we approve the pro, proposed preliminary plat for Eagle Nest Estates, a standard subdivision with 10 lots located at approximately 860 East, 600 South in the R1-9 zone.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second one by Councilman Gordon, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance 12-15, repealing and reenacting Title 13 utilities.
Okay, we talked about this last time, this is really a consolidation of all our utility ordinances into one concise ordinance where we have a general section where we were able to take good provisions out of each utility and, and, and put them all in the general so it applied to all the utilities, we're also able to simplify some things and take out maybe some provisions that were redundant or conflicting, and, and just bring them all together. What I tried to do is the major changes, put in bullet items, and, and just talk about that, and that's in the agenda, you could put the memo up, I guess, if, if we wanted to read those on the screen, but the first one is, our water and pressurized irrigation systems have always been together when we bond, we run it as one department, and, and this year we've combined the budgets to match up with how we bond, and then, we had several different sections for different water and pressurized irrigation, but, but really, that a lot of the things that applied to the one really applied to the other, so we brought those together into one section as well, so that was a really positive change from this. Also, UMPA has recommended that we change our net metering ordinance from allowing only 1% of our average energy used to come from net metering, which, for those who don't understand what net metering is, it's when someone puts up, say, some solar panels on their house, that collects electricity, and that electricity can either go to run the house or actually go out into our system, and, and, and we put a meter on that measures going both ways, and so, what this ordinance would do is it would allow credit for electricity coming from these solar panels, or what have you, into our water system of, of up to 5% of our total energy use in the city instead of just 1%, and that's recommended by UMPA. It also allows it to go up even higher to 10% if the city council votes on that, and so, you know, right now, we're, we're much less than 1%, but people are coming on board with solar panels and things, and, and so, this kinda prepares us for the future of that. Another, another kinda major change to the utilities that, that you'll find in, in, in this version of Title 13, and we talked about last time, is, is when we first saw, started the solid waste district, we passed provisions that we wanted all, all garbage, all solid waste to go through our transfer station. This is, is being done mostly for residential, but not for commercial, and as I looked into that, I talked to our solid waste district manager and asked him why that was the case, and, and he told me that, that the state passed a law that you could not regulate where commercial waste goes, you couldn't require them to go to a certain place, and that, that had to be competitive, and so, we had a lot of ordinances that told you how the commercial was going to be regulated and required to come to our transfer station, and really, we weren't enforcing those because it conflicted with the state law, and so, we've taken all that out, but the state law does allow for residential waste to be regulated like that in order for us to, to, to build transfer stations and be able to have enough waste go to them to make them financially feasible, and one of the things that, that we have is a situation where you have a lot of apartment complexes or what have you that have dumpsters, very hard to regulate that, and so we treat those as commercial, but we do have some residential apartment buildings that use the curbside collection cans, and I've noticed throughout the city, and, and really only in one or two places, but, that the, those aren't necessarily Spanish Fork City curbside cans, and, and this ordinance doesn't change that they're required to, to come to, to our transfer station, it was that way before, but this very clearly states they will come to our transfer station, and, and unless you give me a direction, otherwise, we will start forcing that in the future, and, and get with these apartment buildings and say, if you have a curbside can, it's gotta come to Spanish Fork. Now, they may have some agreements, contracts with waste management, or whoever they've contracted to, to pick up those curbside cans, and we'd work with them, and, 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 and not make them violate their agreements, but they would need to migrate over to our curbside can, and, and, and that's just an efficiency issue, but, but really, the, the requirement's not changing, we're just being very clear about it, you will bring curbside cans to, to, with our service. Next item is, we have a stormwater utility chapter, this is mostly all new, that whole section is, is, is new, it's required with our MS4 permit, there's a lot in there, it, it basically creates a lot of work for our stormwater people, but we didn't have any other options on that, we have to, we have to really start heavily regulating stormwater in Spanish Fork, and, so that, that whole section is, is mostly all new, and then, on septic tanks and connection to sewers, we, we did have a place that said that once a sewer line was within 500 feet of a resident that was on a septic tank, they had to connect over, and we had another one in a different ordinance that said 200 feet, and we've brought, made that all consistent to, I think it was 300 feet, and we made it all 300 feet, so. Any questions at all about Title 13?
You know, a couple of weeks ago, Chris sent this to us and had us talk about it, there's 75 pages in, in Title 13, and he says, I've made some repealing and some reenacting portions in it, so I go reading through it, and I get all the way through and I can't see any changes at all, so I called Chris up and I said, Chris, I don't see any changes in this at all, and he goes, boy, I forgot to send it to you, so, so he did send it back to me, and, and I read, I had to go back through it again to read and make sure where I was putting these in, where I wasn't putting them in, but, there's 75 pages in Title 13 that, you know, you have to read, and, and Chris has done a great job going through there and, and fixing it up, I think, I really do, so.
It's a, it's a big ordinance.
It is, great, thanks, Chris. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt ordinance 12-15, and ordinance repealing and reenacting Title 13 utili, excuse me, utilities.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Davis, a second by Councilman Mendenhall, since this is an ordinance, we'll do a roll call vote, Councilman Scopes?
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Pass. Larson Elementary, LID project. Alright, we're gonna change up before we do that, we're gonna move, go down to item 12A, proposed change to Title V, requirement for home occupation, someone might let them know, let them come in.
Do we get extra money from the budget for the attendance?
I hope so.
So like church.
That would be, that's not how it works.
Wouldn't that be good?
Be good.
Wait a minute, we get them all in here, that wants to be here. There's a whole, yeah, there's chairs up here in front, there you go. Okay.
I believe the council received last week a proposal that was made by a resident of the community to change a couple of different standards, a few standards that we have in Title V relative to some home occupations, we have this on your agenda tonight for discussion, we've delivered a little bit of information that we've collected from some other cities relative to how they regulate home occupations, specifically talking about daycares and preschools, but otherwise, like I mentioned, we just have this on the agenda tonight for discussion, if there's anything that we can do as staff by way of collecting or discussing any information, we're happy to do that, but we're really here just, just at your disposal. We're just asking to go over some of the stuff that we collected from-
Sure. Yeah, I think that'd be great.
We have a PowerPoint presentation, I think, it's a pretty good synopsis of everything we have in the memo, if you wanna go to that, maybe Seth, and we're really just looking at, say, three main things. For home childcare or daycares, how many clients or students, children, somebody can have in a, in that particular use today, we regulate those as home occupations, in Spanish Fork City's current limit is 11 students by ordinance, now, there are also some state rules that come into play relative to square footage and how many care providers are available onsite, but right now, our limit relative to the number of kids that can be in a home childcare or daycare is 11. Also, currently, we do not allow for any outside employees to be involved with any home occupations. However, for example, if there's a husband and a wife, or a mother and daughter, that both happen to, to be employed, so to speak, by the same home-based business, home occupation, as long as they reside on premise, that is perfectly legal, as far as we're concerned, but that's another thing that I believe the applicants would like to, to discuss, and then lastly, we have a square footage requirement that applies to home occupations, so, I'll just go through this fairly quickly here, if we can get, those are some cities that we looked at, in fact, these cities that we looked at is relative to the regulations that they have in place for these types of businesses, so, first of all, of the 11 cities plus Spanish Fork that we looked at, 12 altogether, six of them allow for at least one, sorry, seven allow for at least one non-resident employee, one even allows for, and I, I'm not sure how they get that number, but, seven allow for an employee that doesn't reside in the home to work in connection with the home-based business, and five do not, five don't allow any outside employment. On square footage, Spanish Fork right now, we have the most restrictive requirement with 300 feet or 15% of the home able to be dedicated to a home-based business, you can see how some of the other cities stack up there. This is, this is by a fact of how much square footage we permit to have dedicated to a home-based daycare, childcare business, how many children you can have on premise, so, because the state requires a minimum of 35 square feet- How many children you can have on premise, so, um, because the state requires a minimum of 35 square feet for each child, then kind of de facto, our current regulation actually is not the 11, um, that we expressly call out in the ordinance, but rather it's closer to eight. Does that make sense? So the 35 square feet is the state requirement, um, by way of how much space you need to have per child. Therefore, eight is what is actually allowed. Um, relative to the number of children that you can have, uh, in a home for a home daycare, child, childcare business. Um, this is kind of how things shook out relative to those 12 different communities that we looked at. Uh, Spanish Fork is at 11. Um, the average, uh, you know, certainly is 12. I think that's very clear, some allow for a few more than that, some a few less, and some don't regulate it. So relative to the things that I understand the applicant would like to discuss tonight, those are some things that we found, just relative to those other cities and how they, they approach these topics and, and the regulations that they have in place. Like I said, we're happy to do anything that we can, help, uh, the council or any residents work their way through, uh, this issue, coming up with any, any ways that we can change our code for the better, if that's something you'd, uh, think is, is appropriate and wanna pursue.
Right. Would the applicant would like to come up and talk to us? And I thought you would.
Yes, I would like to speak.
I figured you would. Would you state your name?
Uh, my name's Lori Taylor. I am a licensed family childcare provider here in Spanish Fork, have been doing it for 36 years or so.
Pull that mic down to you, this, that'll make John Bogdan happy.
Okay. I'm also a, a trainer and a mentor for Care About Childcare at UVU. And I'm a chapter director for the Professional Family Childcare Association for South Utah County, so.
Great.
And I live in Spanish Fork. Um, I also did prepare some things. Um, is it okay if I hand those to you?
Well, yeah, yeah, we take that, we take cookies.
Okay, we also tonight have here, we brought a representative from childcare licensing from the state. Um, so she's here to answer any questions that you might have about the state rules. Uh, we also have, um, Julia Morris here from Care About Childcare at UVU. She's the director, um, of the, it's a resource and referral for, um, providers and families in Utah County and other counties. Um, Elsa Wilton is here for, she's the president of the Professional Childcare Association of Utah. She's here, can answer questions if you have any questions on, um, environments or anything like that. Um, the federal food program, Alliance for Children, they're here tonight too. They can answer questions about health and nutrition in, in childcare. And of course, we have lots of families that use our services and other providers here tonight. So, um, if you have questions, you know, we'd be glad to answer those when I, when I finish. But first we want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. And, um, we want to let Spanish Fork know how, um, how much we've appreciated their support over the, the years. And the community here has been very supportive of our businesses and we, uh, really appreciate that. Uh, Spanish Fork City is a great place to live and raise a family and run a business. I've, I've lived here since, uh, my husband's here, been, been here his whole life and, you know, we've raised all of our kids here, so. Um, the changes that we are asking for are in line with the state childcare licensing rules. State licensing rules allow licensed childcare homes to care for 16 children at a time where space is available and there's a second caregiver. Um, this is a copy of the rules that we follow. Um, so these are the state licensing rules that we're required to follow. And, um, we do that. And then the city, of course, has a, a few rules and we try to follow those too. Um, but the rules are designed to help ensure a safe, healthy environment for children. The state of Utah has taken considerable time, money, and effort to establish the guidelines to run licensed childcare businesses, which serve not only Spanish Fork, but all the other cities in the state. These guidelines meet all county and federal laws and are developed by early childhood specialists, pediatricians, community partners, and parents who understand child development and the needs of children in group care. Children need and deserve quality care no matter where they are, at home, with a parent, being cared for by a relative, or in a childcare setting. Licensed childcare providers provide a safe, nurturing environment where children are free to learn new skills, develop self-esteem, make friends, and develop cognitive abilities. There's many advantages for children who are enrolled in a licensed childcare, uh, program compared to the unregulated. And some of those, I did put a list there in your packet of, um, some of the advantages of a licensed, uh, program over that. We also did a little research on the cities just surrounding Spanish Fork. There's also, I put a chart in there that shows the cities. We went from Payson to Provo. I actually called all the cities, checked their codes online. And, um, I put the people that I talked to and the phone numbers there. That's, that's what we found out when we checked the closest cities to Spanish Fork. And four out of the five cities are allowing 16 children, which is the state maximum, for their licensed childcare home occupations. Many other cities in the state are also following the state rules as well. Uh, we estimate the increase from 11 children to 16 would increase our daily stops to our houses, um, from an average of 16 a day to 20 a day. So, um, this is still less than the preschools that have 11, because we, if they have two sessions running, um, that's 44 total stops a day. And usually with our businesses, the parents aren't all dropping off at the same time. Many of those children live in our neighborhoods, they walk to our homes, they walk to our house from schools. Um, and so we also have multiple children in a family. So we, even though we have 16, that doesn't mean 16 parents coming and going all the time. Um, several of us have three, three children that come together, so. Um, we're asking Spanish Fork to amend the home occupation ordinance to match the state rules for licensed childcare in Spanish Fork. We know that you care about children in our community and you want the best possible options available for all families who need childcare. Um, the need for childcare in Spanish Fork is growing, especially the need for infant care. We get calls all the time asking, you know, do we have room? And, um, it's hard to turn them away. We don't know where they're gonna go. Um, so we're asking you to support these changes so that we can continue to run our businesses, help support our families, and provide quality care for children. Licensed family childcare providers are a valuable resource to the community and we contribute to the economic development of the city. We also have a paper in there that the Care About Childcare at UVU, uh, did on the economic impact of, um, of childcare in a community. So we're asking you to continue to support us, we're asking you to support families, we're asking you to care about childcare. So, thank you.
Great, appreciate that. Any of the councils like, uh, ask any questions or any comments?
Uh, she referenced somebody from the state that's here.
Well, come on up. Good date to have you go all the way from the state and not come up here. You wanna state your name?
Hi, yes, I'm Joyce Hastings and I'm a childcare licensing specialist and training specialist for childcare licensing.
Right.
Are the, are there changes always being made to this world that you live in?
Of course, okay? Change is inevitable, right? Um, however, um, with the licensing rules and regulations, they don't change very often. We have to, um, go through our rules every five years, just evaluate them to see if they're still in context. And of course, if other research comes up, then we do change them, um, through the process of licensing, which you know takes a little while. Takes about a year to change a, a rule. Um, I do, um, and I just wanna make sure that it's really clear here, my role here, okay? Cause, um, there are 14 providers here in Spanish Fork that are regulated and licensed, either licensed or residential certificate providers. Um, my role is to just answer licensing rules and regulations. You know, I love to sit up here and just tell you all kinds of other things about providers and things like that, but that's not my role. But it is to answer any questions you have with rules and regulations. I will tell you, there are several cities, um, because we have gone to a few other, um, councils also. And there, um, a lot of the cities have now changed their ordinances to read, um, that the ordinances say, following the state rules and regulations. So that when the state rules and regulations change, the cities don't have to change their ordinances. But of course, that's up to you as a council to decide on that.
So what, just for everybody that hasn't read it or know what's going on.
That little book she has?
And I, I was wondering if she'll let me take it home tonight, cause I'd like to go through that.
It's on our website, so you're welcome to it.
Could you just state what the state licensing rule and regulation is?
Yeah, um, and there's quite a few of them, but of course, I'm gonna do the ones that you'd probably be the most concerned with. Um, that is 35 square feet of space per child. And a lot of times people are not, I'm a visual person, I'm not one who can figure out 35 square feet of space. So it's the average size of a standard sleeping bag unzipped. That's the easiest way to say 35 square feet of space. Um, and then we do allow one, uh, one caregiver to eight children based on their square footage, okay? Um, and we do allow also a license up to 16 children, again, based on that square footage. Now, the square, square footage for outdoors is a little different. It's 40 square feet of space, so they also have to have that space for the children, because of course, children are a little bit more around bungus outside and they need to get up around and run around.
And they're not just gonna stay in that little square?
Yeah, they're not gonna stay in there, yeah. Around one tree, yeah.
But your interior square footage includes basements too, right?
Um, it includes any spaces they're going to use for childcare. So like if they're not gonna use their master bedrooms, which very few people do, we don't count that in their square footage.
Designate that to you?
They have to, the things they, we do not, yes, they do, when we're doing their licensing. The, the things that we cannot count in their square footage are entryways, hallways, bathrooms, and closets. So those do not count in the square footage within our rules.
Does it also state that one of those regulations is that we, that we are required to follow all city, county, and federal rules?
Yes, yes, it is.
I live in an insurance world.
Uh-huh.
And I know that most of the policies that I write that have, are just a home policy, do not cover. Child daycare business. Does the state require a commercial, to see a commercial insurance policy from the individual?
We do not. Um, and that would again, would fall under the state local laws and regulations, but we do not look for insurance for that because it is, the rules can only be written for the health and safety of children. It cannot be written for the health and safety and for financial protection of the caregiver. So it's only written for the health and safety of the children. So that goes past our statutory, statutory right as far as license, as far as insurance goes. So.
Do you, uh?
However, we do sometimes tell people things with insurance, such as, I know some insurances do not allow trampolines. And we suggest to them to check with their insurance agents. So we do suggest that to them, but we can't do it as far as a rule goes, cause again, again, it protects the business, not the child.
Okay.
So do you go in when someone applies for a license and do a, a check of the home or?
We do, we do a preliminary.
Do you do that on a regular basis or just?
So we do a couple of different inspections. And actually, the inspection process is in our interpretation manual, which is on our website, which is easy to have. It's childcarelicensing.utah.gov. Um, but it goes through that inspection process, so if you wanna review that later, you can. Um, but we also, we do a preliminary, which is called a pre-inspection. And that pre-inspection is to make sure that there, all the rules are being adhered to before we actually issue a license to the providers. Then on top of that, we go in a minimum of twice a year, usually three times a year, um, depending on when their, um, their outdoors, outdoor area can be inspected. If it can be done with one of their other inspections, then we do it at the same time, otherwise we come out for a third inspection. So we do an unannounced, an announced, and along with that announces an outdoor inspection. So that's included with it, but depending on the season with that. And then, of course, if there's anything out of compliance, then we also come out to do follow-ups, to make sure that that rule is still remaining in compliance. If anybody in the city or their community or parents or anything file complaints, then we also do those inspections. So it's not just limited to those three times that we come out, but, um, we do those.
That's annually?
Annually, mhm, those are annually, yeah.
Now, is that different from a professional or a commercial? I, I don't know what the distinction is.
It's the same actually, as far as, that's the same type of, um, inspections.
So they have to get a license through you also?
Yes.
Okay.
They do.
All right.
Yep, they do.
And you inspect them too?
We do.
Gosh, you're busy.
Yep, it is. I was in Salt Lake just a few minutes ago, that's where I was running. Yeah, so, yes.
That's great.
It's a big process, so.
Any other questions?
No, I really appreciate you being here.
Yes, thank you for coming down, you know?
And if you have further questions, I don't mind if you call me. It doesn't, if you want me to give me your phone number, you're welcome to give me a call. I'd be more than happy to answer your questions. Um, I don't know if I can give that over here, can I?
I wouldn't give it over the, or.
I don't care if anybody calls me, it's fine.
If you give it to Dave or Angie, if you'll give her your number, we can get.
I had a question, if, is there a minimum number before they have to be licensed?
Yes, as far as, um, state regulations goes, they cannot care for any more than four unrelated children.
So five, then they have to be licensed?
They have to be regulated, yes, either residential certificate or, um, licensed. So there's two different types of regulatory, um, categories for home providers. By statute, we had to do that. Um, the biggest differences with those are mainly paperwork issues. So that's, the ratios, the, the square footage and everything like that is the same for the residential certificate or the licensed providers. And, go ahead.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
So someone that's caring for five children now has to, would have the same inspections, the same regulations that someone with 16?
Yes, yes. And the other thing is, is that we do a very, very extensive background screening. In fact, ours is the most intense background screening of any other agency for providers. We check everyone that lives in the home, as well as, um, anyone who's going to have anything to do with the business at all. And, you know, I can say on the record that we have actually denied police officers and school teachers. So it's a very extensive and very rigorous, that background screening.
So if I'm tending five children, I legally need to be licensed through the state?
Yes, and if they are not, if they are not licensed and we get complaints on that, then we tell them they have to get licensed.
If I'm tending four children?
That are unrelated.
About, I don't have to be licensed?
By law, you don't have to. Now, some cities have changed that ordinance, in their ordinances, saying they have to be, so of course, those people would have to be. But most of them are for, go with the, what the statute says right now, cause it's a statute, not just our rule.
But those five, if they were your five grandkids, you could probably watch them, Dave.
Even your 20 grandkids, if you really want to.
There's many people that don't understand.
No, they don't. And we do get complaints on that that we follow up on frequently. That's probably one of the biggest complaints that we get in the communities that we follow up on.
How do you get those complaints?
Um, they can do it online or they can call them into us. And that can be done by, by people in the community, it can be done by, um, other providers, it can be done by, um, the staff members of other facilities, parents, parents. Yeah, parents are the biggest ones that call and complain. So that's probably where we get the most complaints.
Joyce, on a, I mean, we're, we're just shy of 40,000 people in Spanish Fork.
Right.
And you said 14 in Spanish Fork. How does that, I'm putting you on the spot, like, if you know mentally, like, someone that would compare to us, population-wise?
I can, I can look up a city in my, in my, if you give me a city, I can look it up for you, if there's a city that you're looking at particularly.
That seems, that just very, seems very low to me.
It is low.
Yeah.
It is low.
Okay. That, that tells me enough, it seems like.
Okay. Any other questions?
Anybody else have any questions for? Great.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Appreciate it, no problem.
Hey Lori, can you stand back up here? And anybody that wants to say anything on this can.
Okay.
Um, our regulations show that we, you can have 11.
Right.
So why are you wanting 16?
We are wanting 16 because financially, it's very hard to run a business and charge parents enough money to make, make it work for 11 children. And so if licensed providers go out of the field, which they do, the turnover's huge for providers, um, because it's not an easy job. It's a lot of work and it's not a lot of pay. So if we are, some of us go back to 11, um, some of us won't be able to make enough money, because we can't charge parents more than they can pay for childcare. Some parents won't be able to afford to work if we have to charge more to stay in business, so.
Is there some businesses in here that have more than 11?
Um.
You have more than 11? How, how come?
They actually come from.
Well, I just wanna ask a question, how come? If our regulation shows that you can only have 11, how come you got?
She's from Sandy.
Oh, you're Sandy, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And I can have some speaking.
Okay.
We would have to have two providers. So then we have to pay a second caregiver the whole time those other children are there, until we drop back down to eight. So then we're paying an employee plus all their taxes and insurance and it's, it's quite expensive to get licensed every year. It's about 12. It's about twelve hundred dollars to get a license with the state and the city and all of the inspections that we require, so. That's, you know, it-
What do we charge?
Forty dollars.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're-
Plus twenty-five for the fire inspection. And then we pay extra for the fire, and then we have to have a-
Oh, we have a fire inspection?
A kitchen inspection, which is sixty dollars, and-
Okay.
And then we have to have, you know, the background screenings costs for everyone that lives in our home, or helps us with our business, and those costs. We have to have so many hours of training a year, and that costs us to go to training. We have to have CPR on first day, that's all training, food handlers permit. All those are, you know, costs that, it costs us to stay in business, so. You know, and then, of course, the overhead for food, and, you know, those kids eat a lot of-
So your two main things is you want to have more than eleven, and you also have the square footage, right?
Yes, yeah. There are, and, and every provider in Spanish Fork is not licensed for sixteen. There's only a few of us that are actually licensed for sixteen that could. So if this passes, not every provider that's licensed is going to take sixteen children.
That'd be up to the state to tell them how much they could, how many kids they could, if they followed the state ordinance.
Yeah, and some people want only eight.
Do we know how many of the fourteen that are licensed can go up to?
There was about half of them, I was looking for-
Yeah, I think there's six.
So about half of them could go up to sixteen for the-
Oh, on the economic thing that you did.
When do you have to have a second employee?
Whenever you have more than eight children, or if you have more than three infants, or more than two infants.
So that's the third area that they need to have amended, that have to, you'd have to allow outside employees?
Right, well, and some people, so, for instance, I have family that lives there, that could be my second caregiver. But maybe that's not the best person to come in and help me with my business. You know, my husband doesn't, might not want to do it as much as someone else might be more suited. But, you know, some providers don't have that option either, they would have to hire someone from, that didn't live in their home, so.
I guess I'm gonna be the hard person here.
Okay.
I don't wanna be, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak with other citizens. I've talked to a couple, no, you can sit down if you want to, or you can stand. I've talked to a few of you. I've even been in your homes and talked to you. And one of my things that I've told people is, I represent, I was voted in to represent all of Spanish Fork. Not just a few groups, but everybody in Spanish Fork. And so I have to look at all of Spanish Fork and, and what they need and what they, and they wants. And try to make the right decisions, sometimes I don't, and that's why we have six of us here talking, because not all of us are right or wrong. You have other neighbors that live in, you have other neighbors that live in your community in residence that don't want sixteen or seventeen cars pulling in and out. And if you have two or three daycare providers in your neighborhood, then all of a sudden, you have a lot more. And it puts a real strain to their neighborhood, and these people have told me this. They've said, I, you know, that's a, that's a strain on our neighborhood, and we didn't move into the neighborhood to have res, to have businesses like that, you know, come in and out like that. We, we're, we're happy with eight or nine, that's not a strain on us, but the double that is a strain on us in, in our neighborhoods. And it might be okay in your neighborhood, in our neighborhood, there's, you know, I don't care, it doesn't hurt me at all, but it could hurt, you know, some, some of the other neighbors will complain. If I, if we pass this tonight, which we will, we're gonna make some decisions here, because I, I don't wanna have you guys have to come back. You know, we want, we wanna make some decisions tonight, whatever we do. But, but the bottom line is, is next week, if we make some wrong, or if I think we've made some wrong decisions, then I'm gonna have another group of people come in and says, why did you do that? You know, I moved into a residential area because I wanna be in a residential area, I don't wanna be in a business. I've also talked to some of the businesses that are commercial, that have sixteen or seventeen or thirty or forty kids in their, in, in a business. And they say, we started a business so we could do that, and we follow the city regulations of eight to eleven. And we follow the rules and laws and regulations, and, and we have the square footage and all that other stuff that the state and federal people tell us to do. But we started a commercial building, or a commercial business because of that, so we could have more children into our, into our business. And so I listened to those people and what they did, and they say, I, we played the rules. I, I played the rules on what the city wanted, and so I decided to go commercialize, and so I went and got a commercial building, and, and I'm doing it because I want more kids. I want it, and I fired, I fired that, and I paid the taxes, the burdens, and all the things that you have to, to continue on as a business, just like I do as a general contractor, or anything else. I know a few of you have got sixteen or seventeen kids, and, and that bothers me a little bit that you didn't come in and look at our ordinances, because I, you know, I'm reading your letter, Laura, and it's stating that forty kids might be put out if we don't change this ordinance. Well, that's-
Can I first ask?
Sure, go ahead.
There was a little confusion, because online, there are some rules, and I think I sent those to all of you in a packet that I sent to your house. There are some rules that are still online. If you type in home childcare occupation in Spanish Fork, you get the rules, the rules come up. I still, they're still online, that say you can have fifteen children. I have a copy of those.
Is that true, Dave?
If it is, maybe I have something you wanna-
Because I sure don't wanna be saying something that's not true, and I, and what I've read in our rule, in our ordinances, I don't see that anywhere.
Okay, this is what is still online, that talks about, this was, and, you know, everyone went to computers but me, so I'm still- So when I didn't actually realize that the code had changed, and that there was a new way to put in a business application. So on the second page here, it says, it gives actually a definition of daycare preschool. Zero to four clients, you're exempt, and I know this was the old rule, I've been licensed for many, many, many years. I have my first city business license from ninety-three, so, which allowed me to have twelve kids. So I know that-
That's this one, right?
Right, so the ordinance has changed. So then five to eight clients, you have to have a certain kind of state license, which is the family. And then if you want nine to fifteen clients, you need to have the family group, although the city called it type two. I think I was the first one in Spanish Fork that actually got the type two for fifteen children from Spanish Fork. The building inspector kept wanting my license to say type two, and I said, the state doesn't call it type two. The state calls it family group, which now they don't, they've gone back to just putting, you know, it's just family childcare. So, and whether you're licensed for eight or sixteen, whichever. But at one time, Spanish Fork City did allow up to fifteen in a home. And so I did not know the rule had changed until we got our business license from the city in January, and it said eleven children. Then I called the city to find out what, what, you know, I don't understand, because here online, it still says we can have this many. So that, that's my confusion, I didn't-
Lori, I think that's preschool.
Yeah, but that's right.
Right?
And if, that's right.
It does say daycare, preschool.
It says daycare slash preschool.
Right.
It's also for a commercial business license.
Now, sixteen or more is a commercial business license.
Nine to fifteen clients, right, I mean, I've got it circled, so I don't know, but that's what it's sort of saying.
Okay, nine to fifteen, it says must obtain and comply with the home occupation ordinance. Home must substantially comply with the IBC and FIRE code. Licensed with the state as family daycare type two, and a copy must be submitted to the city. So those were the, sorry, those were the rules that I was following, and I did not know that the ordinance had been changed. In fact, I have searched, and I can't find when exactly it went from here to eleven.
You remember, Dave, you remember when that changed?
I can speak for the last ten years, does that help?
Well, I've been doing it thirty-six.
Yeah, so easily it could predate what experience I have with the regulations, but- If kids are around, these are, are, he did it for a long time, he regulated business licenses of all different types, and he was surprised that we allowed eleven, he thought it was a lower number than that, so I-
So it's not that we intended to break the city rule, we just didn't know what it was.
I, I think the challenge we have is that if that's what's actually on the website today, and that gives the citizens the information, this is what I can have. Now, I don't, I can't find where you, where it is today. But if that's what's there, then that's where- So is this something that you've had for years and years, this, this paper that you-
Actually, I pulled it up two days ago. I actually mentored providers that get licensed in different cities in the state, and so there was a provider that I was helping in Spanish Fork, and she showed me her city business license that said eleven, but she didn't have her state license, and the city used to require that we turn in a state license before the city license was issued. So I assumed that they only granted her eleven because she didn't have her, her state license yet. So that was the first time I saw it. And then when all of us providers in Spanish Fork got our new city business license, and it was printed on the bottom, then I called the licensing place here and asked about it, and then I was informed, yes, you can only have eleven children, you can only use three hundred square feet, you can't hire employees, and you can't store any equipment that you use for your business outside. That's what I was told. So that, so then she told me where to look up the code, I found the code, and then, you know, that's where we are today.
But Lori, you've been, you've been doing this in your home in Spanish Fork for-
This is the, yeah, this is our third house, yeah.
Okay.
So every house, I got licensed, you know, I followed the rules, I did what I thought I was supposed to do. We're in our third house now, and every year, I apply for my city business license. And this is the first year that it's actually been printed on the license. And since they did that, we send a copy to the state, so now the state, of course, is going to enforce the eleven rule for providers in Spanish Fork.
The ordinance you're talking about, Lori, is that the one, the fifteen dash twelve that you've brought up?
That's not what that is, but I have looked at fifteen twelve.
Fifteen twelve, as I found it, says a lot about an ordinance amending the business license and home occupation regulations, and at the very end of that, the very last condition says the following conditions must be met in order to obtain and keep a home occupation business license. No more than two non-resident patrons are permitted to be at the dwelling at any one time by reason of the home occupation, except that daycares and preschools are permitted to have no more than eleven patrons, including the provider's own children, four years of age and younger. So it's the very last part of an ordinance fifteen dash twelve-
Right.
Is all that I could find after you, you talked to me.
Yeah.
Other than that, I can't find, so I'm thinking that's October twenty twelve.
But the thing that David's talking about with this other thing, if it's sitting on our line, that's, that's a discrepancy of what we're talking about with our own laws, and-
Sure, sure.
So, well, and then, you know, the state, of course, said we could have sixteen, and we assumed the city said we could have fifteen.
Again, the state does say that we go back to our city.
Right, and I thought the city said fifteen, since that's still online.
Well, you need to find that, I guess.
It said fifteen there.
Well, okay.
So that, that's why where you're asking, why are we, you know, having more children though, than we're allowed?
That's what I was gonna say, is how's forty kids gonna get changed if, if we're all following the rules and regulations?
Well, and if we follow the three hundred square feet, we all have to go down to eight.
I wanna address that too. I think that's too small, too. You know, I'll, I'll be the first to admit that. I, my kids were raised by other parents, you know, my wife and worked, and I worked, and so we were always taking our kids to daycare, but it was always the neighbor, like you said, that, that loved our kids and took care of them, and they had the whole house to roam around it, they had the whole yard to roam around in. I, I, three hundred feet, I don't know where that came from, or thirty-five with the state, I don't know where that comes from.
Well, that's a minimum, that's a state minimum.
I would, I would almost say, I mean, I've read through some of these things, and, and I've wrote down some deals, and I would say, I would say you can go through the whole house, but there's like an infant that's two years or younger can't be in a basement. He needs to be on the main floor, because that's what the state, that's what the state says. If you're in a sleeping area, you have to have an egress, a window that they can get out.
That's FIRE code.
That's FIRE, that's, that's FIRE code, so that has to happen.
But they don't say that we can't have infants in the basement.
Some FIRE codes do.
It says two, it says two egresses, one's going upstairs, the other one's a window with at least a ladder to get out of.
So if you have a door that goes to the outside from your basement-
That's, that's one, that's an egress.
And then if you can go up the, whoops, and you can go out a window, those would be two egresses.
And, you know, a four, a four-foot chain link fence, or a four-foot fence, you know, and then a two inches underneath, so they can't crawl underneath, that type of stuff. I, I would, I would say, let's put that in our codes, you know, that they can, you know, they can go through the whole house. It covers over your, you know, over your electrical cords and, and, you know, and, and that type of stuff. And we could rewrite that into our, into our deal, because I don't think three hundreds, yes, I think, I think the whole house, you know, and I don't care if it's three hundred or twelve hundred or whatever. I think that's, I mean, all my kids got to run around the whole house, and, so, you know, I'm, I'm willing to change something like that. It's, it's the number of kids that I was really looking at because of businesses and because of neighborhoods, uh, neighbors, your neighbors, and on what they were telling me. But this thing that Dave's talking to us right now, I was gonna say, I wanted to make a motion on this tonight, but because of that, I think we need to look that up and find out where that's coming from before we can address that. I don't know what the rest of the council says, but I, I, I would not want to say something, then turn around and have this still sitting in there somewhere. And we can't find it right now, they're looking, but we can't find it, so.
So I'm, I'm just trying to find, and I don't think that it is linked anywhere from our website, but it's very likely, this is probably a ten, fifteen, well, at least nine to ten, right? Because Title Seventeen- Right, so it's at least ten years old, but it could be a lot older, but there are a lot of things in here that, that say, wow, this is an old document. This is almost worth museum material.
But if we had changed our ordinances, that should have been changed.
It is changed, that what, so the challenge, sorry, just hear me out a few words.
You can just Google it and find it, is what it's saying.
What happens on websites, this is gonna get totally away from daycare and childcare, and get to websites. What happens on websites is if this file was changed, but the actual file itself is left on the website, in the servers and the files and things where it's buried online, you can find it if you Google search, which I did. It just found a few keywords on here, and it's very easy to find. But as far as it being referenced and linked on our website, it's not, I can't find any links yet for it, but you can find it, as you did.
I actually didn't get it from a link, I just Googled like you did.
Exactly, and that's the only way that you can find it. And so I can visit with our webmaster and have him go and yank the file, but it's not linked anywhere. And so it, it is something that happens just in the web, in the cyber world, where old files get stuck in there, and, like I said, it's not linked, it's not referenced anywhere, but if you Google search, like you and I have just done, you can find it, and it does create some confusion. But it is, it's at least ten years old, as far as time goes. So I, you know, from a website point of view, really sorry that it's there, and we can work on that.
That, that doesn't help her, in the fact that that's what she's relied on.
Right, exactly.
And other providers.
The, the challenge with that is, you don't even have to do a Google search, if you go to the, the city's website-
That is, technically, that's, we use Google to do that, but yeah.
Okay, yeah, and the, the search link that we have on the city's website, you look for it, and it brings up any type of ordinance, any type of minutes, any type of anything that has certain key words. I looked up daycare, I looked up childcare, that does come up. Now, I'm in a position where I recognize that's the old city logo versus the new city logo, and so I, I looked at that and knew that that was, that was obviously an old, an old information, and as you, as I read through it, that's, we'll go old-new for the, the basis of the conversation, but that's the old application for, for business license for childcare. And because of the wonders of the internet, things that are on the internet are always on the internet, and so that's why it comes up. Now, in the interest to see if, if and how that works, I signed up for a business license as a daycare provider. Now, I didn't hit submit and go through the whole process, because my word with teaching school and military and other things, I, I, I can't even venture into that world. But as you go through, and you go through the steps of, you know, what type of business do you want, you click, and there's pull-down windows all with the new, it comes up and it says, it references you to five dash forty dash zero four zero, which is our Title V code with the home occupation businesses, and it does reference the, the ordinance that was passed December of thirteen that says eleven. So it's one of those, if you do it paper-wise, and you're not tech savvy, and I don't mean that as a-
Yeah, I, I'm not.
As a slight, but if you're not tech savvy, then you would find the paper by doing the- find the paper by doing the basic Google everyone has that does have, that does come up with fifteen. And if you do it online, as we've, we've gone to the e-online services, it comes up with eleven. Now, one question, which is the concern that's been stated, one question I have, I couldn't find anywhere with minutes and discussion and things like that, where and how the discussion took place for the change. If a provider has fifteen and had fifteen at the time, and it changed to eleven, is there now a legal non-conforming issue? Are they able to stay fifteen because they were, they had fifteen at the time the ordinance changed, thereby, they would be allowed to keep fifteen until such time? Is there something like that, or?
What, what's your thinking of it, somebody? It's only regulation, it's a, it's a business regulation.
Right.
So, the grandfathering relates to somebody. Generally, if you make a change like that, we would give people adequate time to advertise that out. But as far as continuing perpetuity, grandfathering, there's no such thing in, in business regulation. That's a, that's a land use in somebody.
Now, if it was a change in ordinance, wouldn't there be a, wouldn't there be a need for a public hearing, since there was an ordinance change?
Not if it's in Title V or business regulations.
Okay. So, feasibly then, the, the change could have been made in Title V, where today, someone is legal with fifteen. There's no public hearing and no, no discussion or input, other than what the council is and anyone who may be here. And tomorrow, they are now illegal because of that Title V change.
Yeah. Like I said, generally, we would allow them some time to advertise that. We wouldn't jump right on that.
Sure.
But when you talk about grandfathering, legal non-conforming, that's perpetuity as long as it's maintained, that concept doesn't exist outside of the land use regulation.
Okay.
Can I just address real quickly, Councilman Davis? When you talked about people go and they get a center when they want to do childcare, we have some parents, I don't know if a parent would want to speak, but maybe, I think it's a good idea to let parents have options. Some parents don't wanna take their child to a center. Some parents like their children in a home setting. I don't know if any parent would.
And I would, guess what?
There's a plenty of them.
I would, too. But the bottom, the bottom line is, is you've also got other people that live in neighborhoods that do not want all them cars. I hate to say that, but that's true. And, and, and it's not, it might not be in your neighborhood, and it might be okay. But on the west side of town, they don't want that. And on the east, or on the south side, they don't want it. And so, this is the whole city. And so, this, whatever we change is gonna affect the whole city. And so, like I said, whatever we make, what decisions we make tonight, I might have this many people or more coming in next week going, hey, we, we didn't want that. And I didn't move into a neighborhood to have businesses come with twenty or thirty cars every day, you know, infringing on my rights. And that's what, and that's why we make ordinances in cities, ordinances and resolutions, is to protect neighbors from neighbors. I've, you know, I've said that. I, I wish you, we could do anything we want to with our homes, it's our homes. And so, we, we look at, you know, I, these rules and regulations have been made through the years to try to be justified for everybody in a neighborhood. And I don't know why it was eleven or eight back in the old days, and why it's eleven now. You know, I don't know where, where all these numbers come from, you know, but that's what they are right now, and that's what people are happy with, until you find out that you are not right.
Well, some of us have been doing fifteen, and apparently, our neighbors are happy with it, too, so.
Okay. Yeah. Could I ask, you know, before we go, no, I need to ask you.
I want anybody to talk, you bet.
Well, I'll go ahead, and we'll let them talk, then I'll ask one after that.
Hi, I'm Maria Reynolds, and I live on the southeast part of town by the junior high. And I am one of the providers that has the sixteen children. So, when you're talking about eleven patrons, that should be considered parents or children? Who are the patrons? The children don't pay me. The parents pay me. So, is that eleven patrons, so only eleven cars are coming? So, like she said, if they're bringing two or three children, that makes no impact, no more impact on the driving situation than if you're allowing me to have eleven individual children coming to my home.
I understand that.
Okay, you understand that.
Okay. But again, maybe there's, the situation in another place might be different. There might be eleven that come in.
Okay. So, why can't it be on there, so the state can put that on there, and they can regulate us and say, okay, they can look at my records, they know who I have in my home. They go through every record, every, sorry, every time they come. I have a sign-in and a sign-out sheet. They know who is there every day. I am on a federally funded food program. I have to report to them every day who's in my home. Okay, so if I'm going above the eleven patrons, they would know. They'd be able to say, okay, well, she had twelve different families that day. Then I am out of compliance. But if I had three kids, right now, I have four children in one family. Four children coming this summer from one family. One car brings them, one car picks them up. So, I should be, so I should be hurt by that because this one wants to bring me four of her children? She's my patron. She's the one that's paying me. She's the one that's doing it.
So, you're saying that we should have eleven patrons, not eleven children?
Children, exactly. If that's, if, if it's the impact on the environment or the community, then it should say eleven patrons. If they wanna bring me six children of their own, let them bring me six children of their own, because they're not making any more impact.
Five patrons come to your house with four kids each, and that's twenty, now what?
But the state still regulates us. You guys don't, you guys don't regulate me.
It's, it's gonna be the state.
Let me tell you what, I've been licensed for over twenty years here in Spanish Fork. Been a great occupation for me to be able to stay home with my children, to be able to be involved with my children, to be able to take those children to ballgames at the ballpark. Those kids are getting impacted by Spanish Fork more than they even know. All right? I took on a second provider, when I started to do the, the group provider, or the group, family group, I did it for my sister. My sister was struggling, working full-time, trying to finish her teaching certificate, to get her teaching degree. She couldn't do it full-time. At the time, I was tending her children. I said to her, what if we decided to do this together? It enabled her to be with her own children while she worked, while she was employed to make money and to finish getting her teaching certificate. That was my initial why. Didn't have anything to do with how much more money can I make. It was to benefit her. She is now teaching. She is impacting children's lives also, so it's gone beyond that. Okay, right now, I have employed my neighbor, who was looking for something part-time that she can do while her children are in school. Because of my situation, I don't require a second caregiver all day, all summer long, because my numbers go down. I tend for a lot of teachers. So, in the summertime, my numbers go down, and I get the school-aged children that come back. So, my neighbor, she walks to work, she walks over to me. She's not bringing an extra car to my house. She's not, you know, creating any more traffic. She comes and has been able to have a little bit of extra income to sign her children up for dance, for baseball, for whatever it is that maybe she wasn't able to do before, because she doesn't wanna have to be able to go out of her home. She started when her youngest was still in daycare, and so, she came and brought her with her. Now, her children are all in school. Well, the hours she works with me are the hours her children are in school. She has all the days off that she needs. Okay, that's been wonderful for her, been great for her. Okay, so that, the whole second caregiver, you know, it's, it's impacting more than just me, and it's not about finances to me. My problem is, is I had so many referrals, not to toot my own horn, but I had so many referrals, that's how I've stayed at the sixteen. I've been trying to go back down, because it is a lot easier at times. Sometimes, it's a lot easier to have a second provider with me, two sets of eyes. If I have to go in to go to the bathroom, the state allows us five minutes away from the children at one time. Wow, you get a five-minute break. All right, I get to go change my laundry over, or go to the bathroom, or go do whatever I need to do. But when I've got that second provider with me, I've always got a second set of eyes. There's always one of us. We're not both going to the bathroom at the same time, you know? There's always this-
You do have somebody.
I do have somebody there with me all the time, all the time. I have to, required by the state, because they are the ones that regulate it. You guys don't come to my house and say, well, how many children do you have today? And for years, twenty years, until just the last few years, have they been coming to my home? I've had one fire inspection in twenty years. I called the city one time, and I asked them, okay, I pay a city business license, where's my fire inspection? Oh, cause it was supposed to be included in that. Never saw anybody, my initial, when I first moved to my home, which I've had two homes in, in Spanish Fork that I've done daycare, two different neighborhoods, never had a complaint. They love to hear the laughter. They love to see the children playing. I've never had a complaint, not with the traffic especially. I live next to the junior high. Who's gonna complain about my traffic next to the junior high? Nobody. Nobody really is. I live in a cul-de-sac. Fortunately, I live at the, the, the first of the cul-de-sac, but you know, they don't have to go down, and they're not affected down at the end. Never had a complaint.
I didn't get your name, sorry.
Sorry, Maria Reynolds.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And I've been a member of the community. I've lived here. I grew up in Salem. My husband grew up in Benjamin. We graduated Spanish Fork High. Four of my five have graduated from Spanish Fork High. My fifth one is going to Spanish Fork High next year. They've been involved in all kinds of sports, you know, community, community activities, playing on the state championship baseball teams. I mean, my kids have been involved. And it's been a great opportunity for me to stay home. And like I say, my initial why I did it was to help my sister. The reason why I'm still in it is because I've had so many referrals. I've never had to advertise, ever. The state gives a website, Care About Childcare. They give all of, all of the licensed people, you know, and we have, we have, I have my own website. I have everything that tells about my daycare. I don't have any parents not coming because I have sixteen. I don't have any parents complaining, because there are so many. They feel fortunate that they've got me in my home, raising their children. Some of them I have raised several children, that I'm on their last one, and I've had them for ten, fifteen years. I've seen children that I've done, I've babysat, graduate from Spanish Fork High School, gone on to play, you know, softball for college. I mean, they've, they're, they're going everywhere.
I, I don't mean to stop you, but there's other people that probably wanna talk to, so.
That's true, sorry.
Yeah, and you've, I think we got your point. And so, I appreciate that.
No problem, any other questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maria.
Good evening. I'll be quick, I promise. And I just wanna thank you.
Tell us your name, sorry.
My name is Elsa Wilson. I am the president of the Family Childcare Association of Utah, and I am a licensed provider in Sandy, and I care for sixteen children. I would like to address just two issues you brought up, very valid issues. You are the voice of all the people in Spanish Fork, and there are neighborhoods that do have concerns. I'd like you to tell you more about what family childcare is. It's multi-age groups. So, parents are bringing older siblings and younger siblings. They're able to stay together. And with one car stop, two or three kids are dropped off at the same time. In my city, for instance, even though I am allowed to have sixteen kids, you'd think, oh, thirty-two car stops. I'm regulated to only have twenty-four. I'm not allowed to have more than twenty-four car stops. That is by my city ordinance. And that has helped in the neighborhood. I've not had any complaints whatsoever, but it has helped with the education part, that there are not multiple cars coming at the same time, which is also very different from a center, because my home opens at seven, it closes at six P M. Breakfast starts at nine, school time starts at nine-thirty, ten, people are still dropping off. There's a two-and-a-half to three-hour window for the cars to come and drop their children off. So, it's not everybody, you have to be school at nine, get your kids out the door and go to work. It is a very much more relaxed environment with the children. So, there's no congestion in the neighborhoods, cause it's drop-off and come-and-go. At most, maybe I've had maybe three times, three cars in the driveway a couple of times, because of the varying times that they can come and go. Family childcare is sought after by parents, because their children can stay together. When they go to a center, they go to different classrooms, and they're not together. You don't have the smell of cookies, you don't have the teacher sitting on the couch reading books in front of the fireplace. You don't have that environment as a center. So, it's very different, and parents really look for that. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to?
Yes, can I speak?
Well, you Matt, you can always speak. It's a free country.
Thank you, yes. And I've got, I've got packets for you to use. They mention every time. I, I do bring cookies, but I-
Oh, gee.
You'll, you'll like what I drive.
All right.
And I'll be, I'll be brief.
Please, say your name.
My name is Julia Mohr, spelled M-O-H-R. I'm the director for the Care About Childcare Agency that's been previously addressed. I was a childcare provider also for many years down in Richfield, Utah. And then, I moved up here and worked at U V U as a director for Care About Childcare, and we oversee the childcare services for Utah Summit, Juab, and Wasatch Counties. And let me just say that quality is a real concern of ours. And people who do licensed childcare provide quality childcare, because they're licensed by the state. When Maria was talking, she said about our website, and we have a little magnet in there that tells you our website. It's a wonderful resource to educate parents and providers. And, and there's, this website that we have is statewide, and our, our providers can go on that website. They can advertise their business for free. It, it's a wonderful educational tool, and we really, really push for quality childcare. We have some grants that we have through our agency that help with quality childcare. And like they were saying, how Maria was saying, she doesn't have to, she, she turns people away. And I know Lori turns people away, too, because they have such a good reputation, that people know about them, and they want to get them into their childcare. My grandkids go to Lori. I wouldn't let them go anywhere else, cause I know the quality care that they have. Anyway, sorry, didn't mean to get emotional. But, but it's, but quality is really, really important, and I think you should realize that, because there are a lot of people in Spanish Fork that do care that is not licensed. And that really concerns us. If they're not licensed, they don't have background checks, they don't have the health checks, they don't get the food program, they don't get the state looking in on them, they don't, they don't, they, they don't get a business license. So, you're missing out on all the money that you would get from business licenses from them. You, you need to really look at that more than trying to limit these people, because there is a lot of care out there that goes on that is not licensed. Preschools in the state of Utah do not have to be licensed. I worry about that, too, because the, the current law is that if you don't keep a child, if you don't keep children for more than four hours, you can take as many children as you want in your home and do a preschool, unless the, unless you get a business license from the city. And then, they, they determine how many children you can have. But that is, to me, that is the bigger concern, because those people could be dangerous people that have access to children for four hours, or the people who are not licensed, who don't get the background checks. So, to me, you might wanna form a committee and talk about quality and care, and talk about some of these issues with preschool and unlicensed care, and talk about that, and have a committee of interested citizens, and, and have people talk about it, see what you can do to, to, you know, express public concern and express all of these things, so everybody in the, in the city would be heard, and then they would feel better about what's going on. So, that's my comments.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julia.
So, my understanding with the, with the three hundred square feet, that's the minimum they have to have, or that's not the, or explain that to me.
Maximum we can have. Maximum portion of a home that can be dedicated to a home.
However, the state has a minimum.
Kids would never survive.
So, Maria, hey, come back up here for a minute. Sixteen kids, huh? How do you do that?
I've been doing it for long enough. It become, it's a habit. And people will say, how can you feed that many? How can you do that many? I do it very well, thank you.
Well, I mean, you must, because if you're really in demand, but-
I am in demand.
With your square footage and your home and stuff like that, where, where do they all go?
Well, fortunately for me, I'm, I'm on the tail end of my children, and I have ample room. I've been able to turn bedrooms into listening centers, headphones, books, just to be able to expand what the kids can be, you know, involved in. I've been able to expand to almost every room of my home.
How about feeding? How do you do, I mean, how do you do that?
Feeding? Well, I have a table that seats eight. I have a bar that seats four, and then I have four baby chairs, and that generally covers it.
How many bathrooms you got?
I have three bathrooms. I do.
He's, he's thinking about opening Daddy Daycare.
You know what? You're more than welcome to come peek in on our daycare anytime.
So, uh-
I, I welcome you.
Joyce, is it Joyce? Come on back up here then. Thanks, Maria. Okay, so with that many people- Okay, so with that many people, or kids, young people, is there ADA requirements and things like that too that have to go with that?
There are, but again, licensing cannot oversee the business end of it, or the, we can only do the rules for the health and safety of the children.
Not the financial...
Not the financial risk, exactly. So that would, that would depend on the provider, so that would totally fall on them to find out what they were following and if they were or not. I was trying to look up some information for you as far as you said about the square footage, but before I go to that also, Councilman Davis, I wanted to ask, I wanted to give you a comment, 'cause I know you're talking about the traffic and things like that. I am no way saying what should happen. I want to make sure that's clear. But I will tell you what, I have seen some other cities require, because I hear providers come and tell me, and some of the providers are required in other cities to actually get letters from their neighborhoods, from the people within a two-block radius, so that they would know that they accept a childcare facility in their home. So I have seen that happen also.
Do you have to do that, Elsa? You do.
How many have a traffic plan?
Pleasant Grove as well?
You have to have a traffic plan.
That's what the most of them have, that.
So with sixteen kids, that should be maybe mandatory, do you think? I don't know, I'm just...
Yes, I just...
Don't ask me that question.
I mean, maybe not mandatory, but a good idea?
We are a home in a neighborhood. I think it's good, because I shouldn't be allowed to do whatever I want. My neighbors have a say too, and regulates the neighborhood. Everybody's happy, they have to stop on the side of my driveway, not in the driveway, on the side, get out, bring their children, and leave. It's been wonderful in the neighborhood.
So things like that should be added into regulations and that in our ordinance, if we did something different, right?
It's been good for our city.
Would you see a problem with that, Lori?
I have eight in Sandy. However, if I wanted to choose to go to sixteen, I would have to petition my neighbors with a, for a conditional use permit to have, to allow me to do, up to licensing requirement, licensing limit of sixteen.
And my question to Lori was, could you see that being a problem for you and your, if you went to your neighbors?
No, I would welcome that.
Maria?
No.
Wouldn't be a problem for you either?
Not at all.
Okay.
If I needed to petition, I almost presented it tonight, I almost went to all my neighbors so I could have presented it, but I wasn't sure what kind of form, like, I wasn't sure what was going to happen tonight, so I didn't do that, but I'm more willing to do that. I live by the junior high.
As a council, as a council, would you be, I would like to have, like Maria and Lori, maybe even one or two more come in with a couple of city councilmen and the mayor, and talk over some of these ordinances we've been talking about, or changings. I mean, I've, my eyes have been opened a little bit. I still don't feel too good about the sixteen, I really don't. I don't, I really, because I think it's maybe a little too much. I really...
I was hoping for that tonight. I was hoping that it wasn't just a slam-down...
Well, I wanted to do that. I really did want to do that, but after tonight, but after tonight, talking with Maria and Lori, and Joyce here, and listening to some of the comments with you, especially, I'll tell you what, you're the one that changed my mind, because of the way, because of regulations with the neighbors, because I think that's only fair with the neighbors. The neighbors, you know, if they're gonna have an impact of so many cars and that, they need to be a voice too, and that's what I'm trying to say. I represent everybody, and like I said, in two weeks, if we did something tonight that went in your favor, maybe, I would have, like I said, a hundred people in here saying exactly the same thing, and that would be another public, that would be a big public clamor, and I don't want that. I hate, this is the worst thing I hate about city council.
It's hard.
I mean, even though I do like to hear, you know, I mean, this is what government's all about, is to have people come in and talk.
Exactly.
That's how, that's how government's supposed to be run. It really is. And so, I would rather have a hundred people in here talking about it, a subject, than not have anybody come in. That's what bothers me about the budget sometimes, is we don't ever have anybody come in and talk about the budget, when I think they ought to.
Right.
I mean, it represents the whole city. But the bottom line is, I would really, if the city council would be in favor of this, I would like to have two or three caretakers come in and talk with a couple of city councilmen and the mayor, and Dave Anderson, and sit down and maybe work some things out with parking and that, and with neighborhoods and things like that. And maybe I would want to have some neighborhood people that do not have childcare come in and voice their opinions too, because they're part of this too. Anyway, that's my...
Looks like we have somebody right here.
One thing you addressed, though, that I wanted to make sure that I gave you some statistics and information on, you're talking about the thirty-five square feet of space. So every rule that we have, we have a rationale written for the rule, which is research-based information, and as to why we should have it as a rule. And I just wanted to give a little bit of information on that. Most of our research information comes from American Academy of Pediatrics and American Health Association, a book that's called Caring for Our Children. In there, it suggests forty-two, forty-two square feet of space per child.
Forty-two to fifty-four.
Forty-two, right. But then, if you look at the audit that was done in two thousand and five, we went through and looked at that, and forty-five out of the fifty states adopted thirty-five square feet of space per child. So that's how we came up, and, because some were higher, some were lower, but forty-five out of the fifty states was thirty-five.
That wouldn't happen to Maria's home, I can tell you that right now.
Anyway, that's where we got that information from.
There's no way.
Thank you.
This is a parent, so I just thought of the...
Tell us your name.
This is, I'm Lindsay Thomas, and I'm a parent, and my children go to Lori, and I just kind of wanted to really quick, Councilman Gordon had mentioned, like, there are only fourteen licensed in the area. As a parent, I'm an educator, and I've done a lot of research and looked into a lot of daycare options for my child, and even though Lori has fifteen, I like, feel like my children are very, very safe there. And not only am I a citizen who works, and, I mean, we don't have a lot of options as far as daycare goes in the city, it's hard to find daycare for our children. I'm also Lori's neighbor, and I would feel, I feel like Sierra Bonita adds a lot more traffic to that area than the daycare that Lori has, and the high school. Yeah, but I mean, as a parent, it's hard to find a great daycare option here in Spanish Fork, and so even with fifteen, I feel like my children are much safer there than other places I've looked.
Thanks, Lindsay.
Hey, I really, really appreciate all of you coming here, and that's what we need. We need to be educated and understand things. I talked to a few of these guys earlier on, and I said, "Yeah, we just want to get this over with, let's boom, be done tonight." And so I appreciate the way you've come in and presented, and been respectful, because this is how it is. I mean, you've educated us, you've showed some stuff that we need to look at, and we can maybe change that everybody's gonna be happy about. And so I agree with Councilman Davis, I think we need to have a few of you come in and meet with a couple of councilmen myself, and let's put an outline of what you think would be good for daycare ordinance, and let's see if we can make it work for everybody here in town. So, once again, thank you for being here and participating.
Hey, and one more thing, thank you for taking care of our kids. How's that? Mayor?
Yes.
While they're here, why don't you get some contacts to Dave, and then...
Yes, if you'll, you know, Lori and Marie, and whoever else, a couple who'd like to be on that, get your contact information to Dave Anderson over here, so we can set up a time where we can meet with you and go over all this. You all right with that, Dave?
I think we have Loris.
Yeah, we probably got Loris, but, yeah. So, let's go do that. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's get back to our schedule here. Larson School, LID project, and Chris, you can't be that long on yours. Yes, Reader's Digest, for...
So we bid out this project, solve some problems that the city has with storm drain, as well as the school district. The bids came in really, really high. We're gonna construct it this summer, talked to the school district, they're fine with waiting until next summer, and we are as well. So we want to rebid in January, but we also want to include an alternative design and see if we can get some more competition in it, so...
Great.
We would recommend that you deny this bid. We talked to the contractor, who was low bid, there was only two that bid, and he was actually surprised he'd won it. We said, "We can't recommend these bids," and he understood and was fine.
So you need a motion to deny?
Yes.
Or the other, huh?
Just to deny the, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
I move that we deny the Larson Elementary LID project bid.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll get it denied.
Okay, good. And it does flood there.
So the next item is a request from the Homeowners Association of Genie J. Subdivision. It's a senior community right here, near the high school. High school's right up here, this is four hundred west, one hundred south. Anyway, their request is that we accept this road as a city street. That would mean that we would start getting, receiving gas tax towards maintaining it. Right now, as a private street, these residents have to all pay an HOA fee to pay for the maintenance of this road. It's not very efficient to do that. Road maintenance is best done in bulk, and even though they pay the same gas tax as everyone else, they get none of that to go towards the road in front of their, of their home. Our streets department, division manager went and looked at it, he says the road's in good condition, he is fine with us taking it over.
Is this ever, can there ever be anything built on that?
No, that is a park that would remain with the HOA, and they'd have to maintain...
Because, you know, my next question was, is, because there's, is there a sidewalk there?
No.
Okay.
There is right here. And really what would happen is, it would still be four hundred south, it'd be much like what we did on three...
Okay. I gotta do the snowplow too?
We would.
We would.
Okay.
Our snowplow fits in there?
Yeah, we should be fine. It is a little bit narrower, which actually is good, where you get paid by the linear center line of the road, so you make money on the narrower roads, and you lose money on the wider roads, as far as the gas tax goes.
It's all money, isn't it, Chris?
It's all about money. That's all it is, all about.
You can't rename it Brandon Gordon.
Oh, that's a great idea. Wow.
You could, you could add that to the motion.
That's too dark of a name.
All right.
I'll make a motion, we approve, the request for the city to take over the private road by the Genie J. Subdivision Homeowners Association. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, resolution fifteen dash ten.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution that authorizes us to enter into an interlocal agreement with Utah County to get some software programs needed for my office. The state's made some changes, where they're doing a lot of electronic filing, that is requiring some double and triple entries on our behalf, and increasing the need for our secretarial staff. The software will eliminate much of that and allow us to maintain our current levels of staffing for the foreseeable future. The challenge is, it's very expensive. If we had to go buy it ourselves, it's somewhere around fifty to eighty thousand dollars, plus an annual user fee. By joining with the county, the county attorney's office has the same dilemma we have, they're going to be paying that purchase price for all of the county, and all we will need to pay is a user fee plus an administrative charge to the county. It's a great deal for us. We actually approved this back in February. Since then, a number of cities in the county besides us have joined on, and the price has gone down, so we're bringing it back to have it reapproved with this lower price.
Right, thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution fifteen ten, approving an interlocal agreement with Utah County to provide case management software.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scobes. Since this is an ordinance, we'll do this by road call. Council Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Passes. I would entertain a motion, go to RDA.
I'm moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman, there is no consent, but you can approve them anyway.
Just checking you. My iPad went dead, we've been here so long.
I wanted to see if you'd do it.
All right. Take it away, whoever wants to take it away.
Here he comes.
Oh yeah, leave when all the other stuff is here.
Yeah, you were really good. You didn't.
I love you.
I love you more.
Are you in public hearing? In RDA?
We approve.
We are in RDA.
We are in...
We're not in a public hearing in RDA.
We're in RDA waiting for you.
There's advertising a public hearing, but we don't need it, because we're not going to change the RDA, okay?
Okay.
So, this is the budget, it's not gonna change any from the very beginning, we're just gonna live by the same budget. I advertise it, 'cause I never know. So there's no changes in the fifteens budget for the public hearing, so there's no need to go into the public hearing.
Well, then we won't.
Okay?
Or approve the consent items.
Yeah, don't approve.